I could do it. Hi, good evening. Today is Tuesday, January 16th, 2018. We are here for the Takahoe Planning Board. Nancy, take the roll, please.
Member Caliano?
Present.
Member Narrenberg?
Present.
Okay. As you probably can see, there are two of us here. We are a five-member board, and we are required to have three persons, three members, present in order to conduct official business. Because we don't have three members, we will be unable to conduct official business today. However, we thought we might try to move this application a little bit further down the road by at least giving the applicant the opportunity to present their application, describe it to us, and take questions from Commissioner Narrenberg or myself. Also be advised that because this is not an official meeting, although we will encourage persons, members of the neighborhood to come forward and offer comments, or anyone else that lives in Takahoe can offer comments, as Mr. Gertsen said, your comments will not be technically part of the official record. So you might want to consider either not commenting tonight, if that matters to you, that it be part of the official record, or consider coming to the next meeting, which hopefully will have a full board, and offer your comments a second time so that they can be incorporated into an official meeting. So those are the options, but the hope is that we can at least move this a little bit further down the road with a presentation. Do you have anything to add, Commissioner? Mr. Gertsen, anything to add?
No, I think he said it perfectly.
All righty. With that, we'll ask the applicant, project applicant, to come forward and describe as fully as you are able, which, by the way, probably, just as a heads up, you may end up doing this again.
I'll have it memorized next time.
I imagine you will, so there you go.
Thank you. My name is Paul Schultz. I'm the Director of Facilities and Campus Services at the college, Concordia College. And I'd like to just go over the scope of the synthetic turf field that we are applying for. And I'd also like to introduce you to our architect and engineer to discuss the details of the project. But first, let me just go over a little bit of the scope. As you may know, maintaining a competitive stance these days in higher education is becoming more and more difficult. Today's students are not only interested in academic preparation, but now they desire all the amenities a college or a university can offer. And this is especially true in the area of NCAA Division II athletics, which is what we are in. Concordia must position itself to offer the best athletic facilities possible, and this includes a synthetic turf field for soccer and lacrosse. Now, most of our prospects, student prospects, are currently playing on turf fields in their high schools, so when they come to visit campus and they see that we have a grass field, it kind of turns them off and says, "Oh, haven't you guys caught up to the 21st or 22nd century," even. So our hope is to change that and make our campus more attractive to prospective students, especially our prospective athletic students. Our plan is to take the existing field, currently used for soccer, and create a synthetic turf field in its place. While we're doing this, we plan to upgrade the area by adding a small building for concessions, bathrooms, and changing rooms, and we'll also replace the aging bleachers, the press box, and scoreboard that are on the field currently. And to help maximize the field, we're proposing lighting. In addition, we'll install a new stormwater collection system under the field, which will reduce the amount of stormwater runoff into the town systems, and allow the college to use the fields following heavy rains. Currently, if it rains more than an inch, we just can't play on the field, we can't use the field. We'll also add some new landscaping to border our neighboring properties to provide a nice screening for those who back up to the field, their yards. In order to get some feedback from the neighbors, we did hold a meeting on January 3rd and had some neighbors, it was, I believe it was a stormy day or night, or the day, next day it was going to. We didn't get the numbers we were hoping for. It was cold, that's what it was. And we did meet and listen to some of their concerns regarding lighting, parking, and noise, and we understand those. In addition to using the field for our soccer team, we've been in discussion with several community groups over the year. I've been at Concordia for 20 years, and for 20 years, we've had community groups coming, asking if they can use our fields, which we want to do. We're very much into community spirit at the college. But unfortunately, because of the type of field we have now, a grass field, it's relatively impossible to go outside of our current soccer team, soccer teams, to use those fields because we just can't maintain the condition of the field in its proper way. So going to a turf field, we can expand our already strong community relationships and add athletic field for young people and youth and adolescents in the community. Our hope tonight, well, maybe next time, will be to answer all of your questions and work with you on possible changes, explain some of the things that we're doing and why we're doing them. Our hope, again, is to begin this project in the spring so that we can have completion in time for the fall season, which begins about mid-August. At this point, I'm done with all I have to say regarding the field, and I'd like to introduce you to two people. The first person is Chris Cramatola from Peter Gisolfi Associates, our architectural firm. And the second gentleman, his name is Jim Cotella, he's from Clark Company. That's our engineering firm, and they do the synthetic turf fields. So I'd like to have those two come up and explain a little bit more in detail about the field, and they have all the pictures and diagrams as well.
Thank you. My name is Chris Cramatola. I'm a landscape architect. I work with Peter Gisolfi Associates. You may remember us from the gym building at Immaculate Conception that we completed probably about five or six years ago now. Like Paul introduced, this project is a pretty straightforward plan, replacing an existing natural turf athletic field with in-kind, in terms of use, synthetic turf field. It's roughly the same size NCAA regulation synthetic turf field, which, I guess you have to bring the mic up. So I am just going to take this plan. I think I'm all right. So the previous plan was the aerial, and this is now the proposed layout, which shows the small bathroom and changing room concession building. It's roughly 1,600 square feet. It would provide onsite place for the teams to congregate, change, and access the field. We would provide access for pedestrian crossing Route 22 at an existing crosswalk, and then stairs down to the, down to the field, as well as access from the current athletic field, athletic building across Rose Avenue where there's an existing gate onto the field. This would promote direct pedestrian access from the rest of campus, from the main academic campus across Route 22, and from the current athletic campus across Rose Avenue. The parking for the field is located just on the other side of this building, here, where there is ample parking for any athletic activities that would be used on the field. In terms of screening for vegetation, there, it's a little, especially from the aerial photograph, you can see how vegetated that barrier is, although when you're down on the field, it's mostly canopy trees, so you can see right through it to the neighboring houses. What we're proposing is a new fence along the property line, along with placing understory trees and larger shrubs to block the human scale view, not just the aerial view. And on the opposite side of the field, near adjacent to Rose Avenue, we are proposing new bleachers. These would replace the existing aluminum bleachers that are in roughly the same location. The quantity, capacity of the bleachers would remain essentially the same. Emergency access and access to the field for maintenance vehicles if needed, and emergency vehicles when needed, is also provided at both corners of the field at Rose Avenue. There is currently no existing access other than the gate that just drives onto everywhere on the field. So we are providing a double fence, one fence at the property line, and another fence immediately surrounding the synthetic turf. So only this slightly darker green color here is the synthetic turf, and so this would have a fence around it at the border, and then there would be an additional fence at the property.
Right. My thought was, yes, that the emergency access, it sounds like it's being improved. And that you have two...
Correct, correct.
Openings, literally.
We would also have, which, as part of the building, we would also have a first-aid trainer's office there as well, which can handle the majority of sports injuries.
Okay.
So, oh, and one final point before I pass it over to Jim. We would also be including a press box here, which would be a simple, small structure, not heated, something for the, where the teams sit here at the north end of the field, they would be able to announce players or call announcements. I'll be turning it over to Jim. He'll go into more detail on the synthetic turf, and as he, he's from Clark Engineering, they're going to build the field, the synthetic turf, the lighting, and the drainage.
Okay. I'm assuming, I do have a question that might fall into your area of scoreboard.
Scoreboard is located here, existing. We would actually be moving that about 15 or 20 feet further away from the neighbors.
Any kind of mechanical technology that is being incorporated into the scoreboard that it does not currently have?
I do not believe so.
Part of the LED lighting, because it's currently in the desert.
And that's the only change?
It would be a more efficient electrical scoreboard.
All righty, thank you.
Welcome.
One thing that you might want to talk about is the speaker system facing away.
Correct. So the press box speaker system faces south, away from the neighbors. That was one of the reasons we placed the press box on that end instead of with the bleachers. You often see it on the bleachers. We wanted that, those speakers to face away from any neighboring properties.
And will the engineer be able to speak to the sound qualities of that announcement system?
That system has not been chosen at this point.
Okay. Well, there's a heads up on, at some point, we're going to want to hear about that.
Correct.
All righty. Ray, any questions? Ray?
No, none.
Okay.
Well done.
All righty. There you go.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Jim Cotella. I work for Clark Companies out of Delhi, New York, upstate New York. We've got a little snow and ice up there. It was quite a treacherous drive here tonight, and, but it's that time of year. I'm an engineer for Clark Companies. All we do is design and build outdoor athletic fields. We're going to handle the field itself, the installation of the lighting, and of the I'll start with the stormwater.
Can you tell us what page you're on?
Okay.
Is it L100?
Those were my plans. The other sheet, it's A half to 11.
Right. That's what he's speaking from? All right.
And I have 11 by 17, if you didn't get those, but...
All right.
This is, this is that same field that Chris alluded to, the synthetic turf field. Underneath that field, we'll have a retention, storage system, an underdrain system, a collection system, and be able to hold the stormwater back. These fields vertically drain, and we'll be able to detain that stormwater, hold it, and then release it in a controlled fashion. We have designed a control manhole here, and we will ultimately be discharging to the same stormwater system, only it will be now controlled and disciplined and held back. And we put a weir, we have the details, I'm sorry, the details of that system. The system, this is a preliminary design. We need to do some geotechnical investigation out at the site to finalize the calculations in accordance with all the DEC parameters. And that investigation will probably be taking place next week. We usually like to let everybody know that we'll be out there for a couple of days with a drill rig, putting some boring holes in. And though, that geotechnical will also serve the purpose of helping us with final foundation design for the light poles. We explained at the neighborhood meeting that we plan on having six light poles with the latest technology. This is Musco lighting technology, LED. They are the leader in environmental sports lighting. They control the spill, the glare, and the skyglow. The Musco representative was at the neighbor meeting?
My question, what's the degrees Kelvin with your lighting?
Degrees Kelvin each, for each LED fixture? I can get you that. I think it's...
Is it much in excess of 3,000?
I believe it is. I believe it is.
Because I know there is some environmental or health hazards supposedly at the higher degree Kelvin that has been bandied about. No research has confirmed or disproved.
And Don Ruda was with us on January 3rd. He will be at the next meeting to, but I'll make sure I find that out. But I believe it is. Typically, we talk about the foot candles on the field. We want 50-foot candles for uniform safety out there. But at the property line, we will show that we can cut that spill down considerably. So we're showing .1 along here, we're showing zero along White Plains Road, and in the backyard, we've got, we're going to do some re-aiming. We have one area where we've got more than a foot candle at the property line, so we were, that's a little bit of backlight from these aimed fixtures. These fixtures are LED and the latest sports lighting fixture available.
So basically, you're saving about 80% of your power cost using the LEDs?
Yes.
What's the distance from the closest house to where you would, where you expect to be putting a light stanchion?
The distance from the closest house to...
The light stanchion, light pole.
I would say this light pole right here will be the closest.
And am I reading that to read about 100, about 11 something feet, or is this too tiny for me to read?
No, that's, that's off the center of the field. It is...
You're about 45 feet.
Okay. Thank you. To the property line or to the house?
To the house.
And every other house is further away, if I'm...
That's the closest.
I mean, it seems obvious, but I'm confirming it.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And typically, that's the area that where we're going to, we're going to try to move this pole a little bit and do a little bit of re-aiming so that we make sure at the property line, we have a little better than the first run-through that we did. Normally, the light that someone on this side of the field would be most concerned with is the light across the way from them. But these are at such a height that we're aimed down, and that's how we control the spill and the glare.
Yeah. How wide is the field at the risk of, acknowledging that I don't have, know anything about soccer fields or lacrosse fields, how wide is that field at that point?
The field...
From field fence to fence, the area is 210 feet.
Plus the 45 for that closest house?
No, so...
We talked about the width of the field. Do you want to go back to yours?
From fence line to fence line is 210.
210.
The lights are further out from the fence, and then from those light poles, then it's 45 to the closest house.
Okay. So that sounds like there's a patch of some feet that's not part of what I thought was the calculation, correct? It's 210 plus 45 plus something else?
Plus this dimension here, which is about 15.
15 feet.
From the edge of the fence to the, from the edge of the fence to the light pole.
Okay. All righty. I just want to get the dimensions down. I appreciate the drawings, but some of the numbers are harder to see than others. That's all.
No problem.
210.
If it's helpful, I can leave with you some 11 by 17 drawings.
That might work. It's going to work for all of us. I can tell you that now for the next meeting. Anything else you want to...
Those submissions, we won't take them like that, they're too small. So the buildings department's going to be required to have full drawings at some point.
Anything else?
The other, you go right ahead.
No, anything else you want to tell us?
I think the only other thing was that we typically, on these fields, talk about the turf itself, but I think, I think the important thing to know is what you have out there right now is a highly compacted topsoil natural grass field that sheet drains. And in a, like Paul said, in a rainstorm, that water is uncontrolled, and I know anecdotally there have been issues with the stormwater. This system, and the whole thing is a system, it's not just the underdrain system underneath it, but it's the stone, it's the collection. This will greatly improve that drainage pattern by having a retention or a reservoir underneath to be able to hold it back in a time of concentration.
What will its capacity be in total rainfall?
Those calculations will be, and Mabel, correct me if I'm wrong, those calculations will be dependent upon that geotechnical information that we get, because we'll have to design the void space in the stone, the pipe sizing to hold back, and the weir plate. But normally, we can hold four-inch storm.
We're required by the DEC to detain the 100-year storm, not just the small storm events, but also the large storm events. So everything that you would see in a 100-year timeframe will be detained from the field in the rain at a allowable rate.
Okay. I'm assuming she's a colleague of yours?
She is.
Fire zone?
May we have her name?
My name is Mabel Gottlieb. I'm with Clark Companies. I'm here today, it's a sidekick.
All right. Just, I know it's, it's not an official record, but somebody may ask in the future, who was that voice coming from out of camera range?
From the back of the room.
Thank you.
Just so you guys are aware, too, you need to look at our local code, because I don't, I think we're on 100 as well, so just make sure you meet that code. I don't think we're more restrictive than the 100-year storm as well.
The last thing I wanted to show you, we were asked to show a few pictures of the lighting. I believe someone, we showed these at the neighbor meeting, and someone mentioned that that was helpful. This is a field in Long Island that has a similar setup. It has six LED poles, three on each side. It has neighbors on three sides, and we just thought it would be helpful, and I believe these are small and in your package, and I have larger ones with me to show what these lights look like at night. The spots that you see here are uplights. The cutoff is so, this, this is the first time Musco's ever had to do this. The cutoff is so pronounced that they have to have an individual uplight on certain poles so that the ball doesn't get lost above the light. Now, these are not visible because they're shining up, but they are visible when you have a drone fly over, and that's what you see there. And the next picture is the same thing, just a different view. And again, the light you see is the uplight.
Lighting has come a long way.
This is a quantum leap in lighting.
There was reference to DEC participation. What can you tell me about that?
Mabel, I'm going to let you speak to that, so you can answer that question specifically, knowing this is an MS4.
You have me on camera somewhere? Am I okay up here? All right. So when we make a supplemental to the township, you do a normal review, checking the calculations. We don't yet have full approval to build and construct the field until we also submit to the state. That's the state DEC that we have to comply with. They have their own regulations. The township code has theirs. We have to comply with both of them. Once we have township approval and MS4 approval, we can then go through and submit to the state. The state has a five-day reviewal period. Once that's granted, then we can break ground. We cannot go to the state without having everyone else's approval beforehand.
And that state agency is the DEC?
And...
Department of Environmental Conservation.
What is the triggering event that causes their participation at this point?
Disturbing more than an acre.
So how many acres is this?
It would be over two.
And what's the extent of their participation? What are they looking for, or what are they checking for?
They are checking for stormwater management, they are checking for rate reduction, water quality, other components of stormwater management that are escaping me at the moment, to ensure that all of the pieces have been checked and covered.
All right. Do you...
And our first order of business is with the town.
Correct.
And all of their requirements during construction and post-construction, but we are required to file that notice of intent with the DEC.
Correct. But the erosion controls will be similar to ours, so, you know, because the DEC is going to be required, when you go over an acre of land, there's going to be, there's going to be requirements that the DEC will require, which we piggyback them as well. There's going to be erosion control, there's a permit that the DEC issues on a yearly basis, and it gets renewed if they don't, if they take more than a year. Am I correct?
That's the notice of intent.
And then, so, basically, all the erosion control that you guys will look at should piggyback the DECs, in theory, because they're going to want soil fencing, how they're going to control it. Are you guys... Are you guys taking any of your dirt out of sight? Assuming this get, gets its blessing?
Yes.
Okay, so there's gonna be...
The topsoil has to go.
Right, so, there's, that, that's certain controls that will be in the pervy of the DEC like the removal of the pads, kinda like we did with the hotel. He's gonna have to make a track pad and, and show us how he's gonna be removing his dirt on a daily basis and all that good stuff.
Right, that's...
I'm just trying to give you a, a synopsis of...
A good picture, um...
That's what I referred to, you have requirements during construction, pre-construction and during construction. And then, post-construction is the stormwater element, the stormwater management element. After the field's in place and forevermore, how this functions stormwater-wise.
Is part of this property in the town? It's all in Tuckahoe?
Yes.
So, why is the town in play?
I misspoke, I said...
Township, yeah, it was the village.
Oh, so that, okay, you're using a generic, alright, fine. I just was wondering, another layer of review.
Let's just take the, let's assume that you're doing what you're gonna do, you're gonna do perk tests, I'm assuming. So, when you do all that, let's assume that there, that there, you hit rock. Are you guys planning on at that point, you're gonna remove rock? Or how, how will that come into your play?
If we hit rock, we will go up instead of down. First of all, our initial, there's been some test pits done out there. Years ago. And we may hit, I don't think we're gonna hit bedrock from the three test pits that were done years ago, but there's the possibility of hitting a boulder out there for sure. The, the topsoil depths that we have out there, and the topsoil has to be removed because it has organics in it that are gonna, that it will decompose and we can't have that underneath the turf. So, that topsoil will be removed, it will be replaced with porous stone. In general, the field elevation will be similar to what it is out there right now. It won't be a lot higher, it won't be a lot lower, but the Geotep will, will lead us to say, ah, we better change this elevation. Let's say we hit rock, we better raise the field six inches so we can get our stone in our collection system and, and all of that. And it'll be important to know, are we going to be able to infiltrate into the existing soils underneath the topsoil or are we going to have to do a different system of detention?
Just so everybody's aware, what we did with the hotel is that we, we did require them to get a permit cuz you're coming in with a drill set and stuff like that. So, just please just come in, have them give you all your insurances, whatever we need to check with the building department and make sure that we issue you a permit just to be bringing in that rig and doing your dig, and your hole testing, okay?
Yes, I will. Good enough, glad we mentioned it.
How long has this been used currently as an athletic field in the state that it's currently in?
I graduated Concordia in nineteen eighty-one and there was an athletic field there, so... It's been there a long time, it was football back then.
Yeah, it was football.
Twenty years ago, they, they renovated the field and added top, added sod and added the sprinkler system that's in there, so twenty years ago was the last time there was an actual renovation, if you wanna call it that.
Right, that's what, that's what I'm curious about, how updated is it currently? Or are you working off of fifty-year-old dirt?
We're working over twenty-year, well, probably fifty-year-old dirt, but twenty years ago, they put down sod and a sprinkler system. That was the upgrade they did twenty years ago, we haven't done anything since then.
Okay. I can't think of anything at the moment, I'm sure there's plenty though that I haven't asked.
Have you guys been upgrading electric or any gas lines coming into the, into this new facility? No gas lines.
So, okay, so you're gonna heat your temper, your accessory structures with electric?
And we currently have electric.
Okay, you have sufficient electric to run this whole facility?
Yeah, we don't know.
Can I just acknowledge Wade, are we having any trouble that I need, we need to respond to with the recording? Wade? Are we having any trouble that we need to respond to with the recording?
Not just the whoever's in the hall or something.
Okay, well, he came out from behind there, so that usually means something. Alright, um, yeah, I was thinking about the electrical too and the story on that is you expect to, you have a proposal, you probably aren't gonna be able to finalize that till you figure out what your dimensions are, correct?
We've calculated the electrical lighting loads for the light poles, but we also have to coordinate with Chris for the building to make sure the electric service will...
Speaking of which...
Function for both.
Speaking of which, you said the building is sixteen hundred square feet, correct?
Correct.
I'm assuming it's gonna have restroom facilities, lavatory?
Yes.
How many?
It would be four stalls per gender. Four...
So, we're talking eight, eight toilets? And how many washbasins?
Uh, it would be three sinks per bathroom.
Okay, and that is a new, a new construct, correct? New construct that's not currently existing?
There's no current building there, no.
Okay, does that impact your, your stormwater, your plumbing at any point?
The stormwater would be detained in the same system, so the runoff from that building would be tied into the field drainage system as well. For plumbing, we would be connecting to the sanitary manhole that's located on-site at the eastern end of the site.
Is the public allowed to use that facility or not? No. Are there facilities for public restroom needs at the moment? And, I mean, is this a question that doesn't need to be asked or should be asked because you have many, many games and people line up and et cetera, et cetera?
Oh, I thought you meant just someone walking off.
No, I, I'm assuming the fieldhouse is for the, for the teams.
Right, the fieldhouse would be primarily for the team use and the locker rooms and the fieldhouse. Spectators would certainly be more than wel, welcome to use this, this new building for restrooms and concession stands.
Alright, I'm just wondering, wondering about intensity of use. How many games do you have in a season for each of these sports?
I'll introduce the athletic director, Candy Latorres, she can answer that.
Hello.
Hi.
Currently, we have men's and women's soccer and we currently have eight home contests for each sport.
And approximately, how many people do you draw to the, do you draw to these games?
Not many currently. I would assume that on our homecoming would be our biggest draw and that's about a hundred.
Okay, so we're not talking about a field that's overrun?
No, ma'am.
Some fields are.
Ours is not.
Ours is not, not Alabama. Okay, Ray, any questions? Ray? Questions?
No, none.
Nothing?
The way I figure this, you have a three-phase, two-hundred-amp service that'll take care of your electrical requirements. Are you coming in at one-twenty-two-oh-eight or two-seventy-seven-four-eighty?
Probably will be dictated with what the building needs, cuz we can do either with the lighting, but probably...
It's a function of what Edison can supply.
You mentioned that, it sounded like you allow other organizations to utilize your field. How, if that's so, how many and, and how frequently does that happen?
Currently, we do not. We cannot even utilize the field in its current state in the spring season for our non-traditional segment. We've been asked by Tuckahoe youth groups, Eastchester youth groups and Bronxville youth lacrosse for constant use of the fields, we've just haven't been able to accommodate. Obviously, the community's a big part of our campus and we'd like to try to accommodate, but obviously, we wanna keep in consideration with the neighbors as well, so we're gonna have to make any, find a, a nice balance.
Right, that's kinda where I was going. And you've indicated you don't have current games, so you don't know how, what your averages might be at this point.
No, ma'am.
Would you be doing any calculations that would give you some idea how much additional use from non-college organizations would, would there, there would be?
Well, based on the need of the community and the amount of requests that we've gotten, a lot, I know Eastchester and Bronxville have asked us, once we get permission, to reach back out to them and that they can let us know what their needs are. Currently, we don't have, I don't have an estimate.
Oh, you don't?
No.
I just thought you might have a tally, twenty, twenty requests a year or something, okay.
I don't edit the time.
Okay, thanks. I'm good.
No questions.
Yeah, I, if you're done with your presentation, maybe we can take public comment if people care to come up and comment, again, reminding you that it's not official because this is not an official meeting and you may wish to...
Hold over to your face.
Hold over, really, hold over your comments to the next meeting, but if that doesn't matter, do you come, come and offer your thoughts? And we'll ask you to identify yourself and just give us your street, not your house, but you can tell us if you're on a street in Tuckahoe?
Um, move this down a bit, I'm Colleen Staunton, I live on Winslow Circle. I back up right to the field. So, I have a couple of questions, I don't know if the athletic director of facilities, people are able to help us answer those. But first, I do wanna say, you know, I can personally see the need for an athletic field. You know, when we moved in, I, we saw the, you know, it's not in good condition, it's, it's not used at all in the spring for either soccer team. So, I do understand and I come from an athletic background, I worked in college athletics, so I do understand the need for a recruiting aspect for that. But I, I do, for artificial turf, I think that we have a lot of concerns and I'll, I'll let some people speak to some of the legal and zoning aspects of the lighting. So, you showed a picture of, of the field from above, but I don't see a picture from the backyard. So, when my backyard, here's my fence, there's the Concordia field fence. So, that light has to go somewhere and I know some of these individuals are even closer to the field. So, when we're talking about lighting of fields, I have a four and six-year-old, they're gonna be playing. You know, I know, I'm not even gonna speak to the, to the aspect of the colleges playing on the field, but when I hear renting out to local, you know, local teams, what is, how is that gonna be monitored? So, it's a college field, but if we're gonna, if we're gonna rent that out to Eastchester lacrosse or Bronxville lacrosse or football, so who's gonna manage that? Are the lights on until a certain time of night? You know, we're in such close proximity, I just think that there's a big concern on that. So, it's fine to say you're gonna rent it out, but when you start talking about renting out at night, you know, I, I would welcome anybody to come and, you may have done that already, to come to our houses, to walk in the backyard, to see how, how much in close proximity this field is. You know, I, I couldn't exactly see, but again, I, I think that there's some concerns there. You're adding a press box, I don't know, did you say how high that press box would be on that side of the field?
It would be roughly...
Okay, and how high will the fence in the landscaping be on that side?
Okay, can you come a little closer, sir, because she can't obviously give you the mic necessarily, but we do wanna hear you.
Uh, the press box would be roughly eight feet off the ground.
Thank you.
And, um...
The landscaping and the fence that you'll be adding?
The landscaping and the fence would be a, quite a robust... The landscaping and fence would be a six-foot fence, picket, wood picket handsome fence and a quite a robust landscape screening involving deciduous and evergreen shrubs and understory trees to block that view. So, that would range in height, that vegetation would range between two feet tall and twelve feet tall to block that view from the houses onto the field. That currently is not in place, as even from Rose Avenue, you can see all the way through both fences to the neighboring houses.
But that's not gonna block any of the light?
Uh, it would block some of the lighting, cuz the lighting would be coming down at around that height there. So, the vegetation would help, the, the photometrics that are currently calculated, take into account zero vegetation on-site. So, any vegetation would be, would be an assistance to blocking that light.
And I'd like to get some more information on the lights, so I know that there were some questions around the Kelvin, I, I'm not gonna pretend to understand, but it's in excess of three thousand. What does that mean, are there, are there health concerns? You know, again, there's a number of, of young children on the street that are outside at all hours of the night, not all hours of the night, but you know, we like to keep our, our kids playing in the backyard, so what does in excess of three thousand mean, is that, what are the...
Hand him back the mic, please.
I can answer some of that. Light temperature, light color is measured in degrees Kelvin. Street lighting is normally up around four thousand if I'm not mistaken. What you use in your home is about twenty-seven-hundred to three thousand. There was some concern raised within the last year in the technical magazines about the higher temperature Kelvin lighting. And the, one argument says we need the higher temperature to properly light the areas so that we don't have safety problems. And there has been no definite requirements or research showing that there is any safety hazard or health hazard.
And how many lights are on each light pole, individual?
I have a cheat sheet here. And the, the Kelvin question, I'll get you an answer, I was gonna look it up in the back while I'm here, but I believe fixture quantity, five on three of the poles and six on two of them and five on another one. So, that doesn't count uplights. And again, I'll get you the, the Kelvin information, but knowing that these poles are up at a, at the height that they are, we'll, we'll make sure we identify that. I was gonna look it up while we were, while we were talking.
Before you go, how tall are those poles?
Uh, five of them are seventy foot. And one of them that'll be down in, all, all of them will be about seventy foot above. The taller you go, the more you can aim that pole and the better discipline you can get. If you're short, then I have to direct it across at you. If I'm up above, I'm aimed down and I can totally control spill, glare and skiggle.
Is that the sole reason they are seventy feet tall?
Uh, yes, if we were to go to four poles, we probably would have to be a little taller to get the cutoff that we wanna get at the property lines.
Okay. I'm just taking in information right now.
So, you know, I, I know that there's a lot of answers, I, I'm not gonna get into the lights, I'm sure it's top-class, high, you know, highest quality. But I, I think again, the concern is, I, you know, I've been here three years, probably one of the newer people along with some others. We moved to the village for various reasons and we knew that there's a soccer field behind it, but you put lights and you start opening it up to the community and I know this'll probably make a lot of people upset, but you know, that's our backyard, that's our kids' backyard. So, you can, you can put them up a hundred feet, the fact of the matter is, there's the Concordia line is right where you're sitting. There's no way you can't, you can't miss the point that this field is lighted. And I don't understand, I guess I would like to hear from the college and how that's gonna be managed when renting out to the community. I know from, from when I was working in athletic department, I mean, there was nobody that, we didn't rent out our college field and who would've managed that? There wasn't that opportunity. And so, I'm just trying to understand the, the nighttime use, so that's my concern. You know, again, I know that this isn't a formal meeting, I'll let other people speak, but I, I think we need to, it would be nice to understand those answers at the next meeting and, and have the usage on how that's gonna happen.
Okay.
Thank you. Ed Conway, we own eight Winslow. And just to the point of the other teams using the field, the lit fields, we know that many of the communities, many of the schools turn down the lights at the fields. You know, we know Bronxville has turned down lights at fields, that's why they want lights. You know, if this was approved, then we'd have lights at Tuckahoe Football... You know, if this was approved, then we'd have lights at Tuckahoe football field. There's no reason not to have that. And I'm sure the community around there would not want that also. We are also down below that field, so it's even going to shine right on our houses, right into our, right into our living rooms. We're not going to be able to use our backyards during this time. Right now, when Concordia has some events in the afternoon, they do play music. It's very loud. You're going to have this eight, nine, ten o'clock at night. You're going to have lots of teams using this field. And it's going to be very difficult to live. Property values are going to go down. That means lower taxes for the village. It's just, you know, if you put that field there, that's what that's going to mean with all of those lights. You know, it's going to ruin our quality of life. We're not going to be use the backyards. Our kids are not going to be able to play back there. You know, that's our, our main concern from there, but also realize that, you know, other, at the schools, people have turned down the lights because the communities, the houses around there don't want the lights.
When you say turned down, you mean reject?
Yes, reject.
Okay.
Because if you put the lights there, then you have to put them at the Tuckahoe High School football field. People don't want them there. No, has turned down lights there. So, they're looking for places to play at night. You know, it's understandable, but it ruins the community. You're not able to use your fields. It's going to be music. There's going to be announcing. There's no way that you can prevent that. It's going to be loud. It's going to be till eight, nine, ten o'clock at night. Now, we don't mind if you bring the gas generators, the lights onto the field like they do at homecoming at Tuckahoe High School and have that for a couple of times a year, but this is going to be constant. And that's going to hurt the property values, or it's going to ruin our quality of life there. Also, just in terms of the, the turf, there is a high water table. So, there is a lot of water there, so any change there is going to impact our basements. We are lower than the field there. So, we do have a sump pump. There's a sump pump in that house. So, that is going to be potentially impacted by that also. So.
Okay.
And again, we are lower, we are lower than that, th- those houses are lower than the field, so it's going to light up that whole neighborhood, not just the people abutting it, but also on the other sides. It's going to light it up and, and, you know, just the same things that, why it's turned down probably at Tuckahoe High School. And we know that it's been turned down at Bronxville High School, too.
If I could just answer some of those questions for you. I, I believe there's a few misunderstandings of, of what the lighting will do. The way the lights work, and Jim, I'm going to need you to correct me on this if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure I'm correct, is, is with the, the type of lighting that is now proposed, it has a, a pretty good cutoff. So, for you to say it's going to be shining in your windows is not an accurate statement, because it's going to be going straight down. It's not going to be going sideways. Okay, so that is something that I think.
But it's been turned down to all of the other schools. They're trying to put out there. They don't want it. It's seventy-foot poles in the residential neighborhood. Seventy feet poles. You know, you can't even put more than a six-foot fence, you know, in some of the houses, and you're putting a seventy-foot pole twelve feet away from some of these houses. And the field is above the houses today.
Um, what was the second one you mentioned? The drainage. We'll improve drainage, to be honest with you. So, it will actually help. It will. It has to, because the only way we can get approval from this village and from the state is if we show that we are going to reduce the amount of stormwater runoff, and that's the plan with the retention ponds. We understand that. But this will reduce that, I'm telling you.
Okay, ma'am, 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 I, I, I'm glad you feel so comfortable, but because everybody does need to hear. I mean, we are being recorded, even if it's unofficial. If your comment is worth making, let's share the microphone and we'll be happy to listen to you. That goes for everybody. Just pass the microphone around if another person is speaking.
My wife and I have lived at the, in the shadow of the, trying to get my directions right, of the northeast corner of the field. There's a slope of about thirty feet. On top of that, it's proposed now to have a seventy-foot tower. It's about a hundred feet above my property.
Could you give us your name and your?
I am sorry. Richard Gardella.
Right.
Sixteen Winslow Circle.
Okay.
When the lights are off and when the, in the middle of the winter, the poles are still going to be there. They're going to be there year-round. Over the years, I've lived there a very long time, and I've never had any problem with the Concordia. As a matter of fact, at one point, they used our outside socket to power their scoreboard. And what blew all the lights one time, too. But, but that was the kind of relationship I would have expected to continue. I don't see that here. I don't see real concern about our strip of houses that are budding right that field. I don't really see it. And I think the effect on our property values will be substantial, as will the environmental effects. And I, frankly, I looked through your code, our code. I live in Tuckahoe, taxpayer, so it's my code, too. While I find things about exterior lighting, I don't find a provision for a nighttime sports field anywhere in the code. And if I were to design a code and allow such a use, I would make it a special permit use and have a series of standards. Since your code does not have that, I would suggest that maybe this is not even a permitted use. And I think you ought to get a legal opinion from your building inspector as to whether that's true or not, so that we can challenge it. I don't believe this type of facility is really allowed in this zoning law. It's not because it was, it's something that wasn't expected and something that wasn't foreseen. So, I think you ought to look at that to begin with. And as I said, I've never had a problem with Concordia, and they've always been responsive if anything went wrong on that hill. But I do think this is a big change. It's mainly the lighting that makes me feel that way. And I would urge them to drop that plan. And as a final matter, I delivered a letter here today, and that should be part of the record.
Yeah.
Even if this informal meeting isn't. And I, and before I close, I would like to thank them, Concordia, for inviting me by letter to the meeting in the library. It was January third. It was very cold. However, the letter never told us about the lighting. And the issue about health is the, is cancer-causing issue that some people have raised, the LED lights. And I think that has to be thoroughly investigated, if indeed it's something that can legally be done here.
Thank you.
Good evening. Steve Hollitz, fourteen Winslow. I think I'm the forty-five-foot house away from the light pole, from what I saw being pointed at her. So, give some perspective of where I live. I have a lot of notes here. I was going to address a lot of the ordinance directly, but since this is informal, I'm not going to spend that time. I just want to do an overview comment.
Let me just say one thing. You may or may not realize it, but we're used to it. These, the details of projects evolve over time. That's not to say you shouldn't comment. I, just that Mr. Gardella mentioned something, and I thought it would be worth mentioning that we're probably going to have at least a couple more meetings before this even looks final. And the purpose of the comments is that the applicant may happen to be able to include some of the concerns in their revisions. So, none of this is final, and you should register your comments as you see fit. But I would suggest that until it's close to the end, we, we don't have to get too worried just yet.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. Colliano.
And that's everybody. I'm talking to everyone. I'm using a euphemism.
I appreciate that this is going to be more than just a one-meeting situation.
Yeah, okay.
But one of the main concerns I have, well, some of the things, and since the folks are here that are, this is good for them to hear.
Yeah, sure.
And just for the board to know, and one of the neighbors actually pointed this out, but along this line here, so this is my house, there's a natural kind of river or some type of natural waterway right here. And so, what I'm hearing about how they're going to handle water, I'm just curious how they could affect the flow, the natural flow that's already there. And I believe it just continues and comes out here. So, something to keep, I'm sure they have it in mind. And also, as noted before, these properties, up here, it's about the same level, but as you go down Winslow, which is this street, it drops down. So, this field goes higher and higher and higher. So, Mr. Gardella, who just spoke, is right here in the corner here. But there is a significant drop there. So, I'm just, I'm a little concerned about them just dumping water into that waterway and then, you know. So, just something, I'm sure they're thinking about it, but as a neighbor, that's one of my concerns. And then, I guess just generally, use, you know, this is the village of Tuckahoe, and I emphasize the word village. I'm seeing a project that just might not be appropriate for a village. I mean, this is, this is an NCAA Division Two sports field that they're trying to develop here. And I'm sure nobody here has a problem with private rights. This is Concordia's field, and they have a right to use it, and they have a right to develop it. I certainly don't have an objection to them improving the field, putting new turf in, playing on the field as necessary. The parts that I'm getting concerned about, and this is where I think they have to hopefully come back with some use restrictions, is the opening of the field to other teams and other people, and the lights. They keep saying this is, they're emphasizing as if they're putting a spotlight and it's going straight down, and that's all you're going to, that's the only place to be illuminated. This is right off 22. Anybody driving by is going to see this giant sports complex that is on until who knows what time. So, again, I'm going back to the broader picture. I'm, I'm concerned about myself, and I'll have my specific concerns probably in the future to see where we go on this. But for me, as a neighbor in Tuckahoe, just representing the village, I'm concerned that this is just not an appropriate project. They can improve their field, and they can use their field for their sports. That's totally legitimate. And I had also asked the board to maybe go back and look at what was the use when this thing was built. What were the agreements then? There might have been restrictions, you know. Do those apply here? So, but it's, it's, it's the use of it and expanding it. They have, another question I'll have for them is to address is, there's our existing parking spaces on Rose Avenue, which is the street where the quote-unquote entrance would be, and where the existing entrance is. And there are parking spots here. So, are those staying? Because they mentioned people can park over here below. And, and another comment I have is, this field is the only piece of property I think they have in Tuckahoe. Their main campus is in Bronxville. You cross Rose Avenue, they're in Bronxville. So, and they have lots of fields over there. I'm not hearing about any improvements to those fields. So, it's the Tuckahoe field. But, you know, I'm concerned about parking and the use. I mean, I appreciate that they're going to do some investigation about numbers, but what are the numbers? What, how many people are going to come? Are they going to be kids playing there? I mean, right now, women's soccer, they start practice about six-thirty, seven o'clock in the morning, and that's fine. I mean, we're, that's part of us living there. That's the college. That's when they use it. But, well, then another team come on at ten o'clock, and another team come on at twelve, and another team come on at two. And, you know, we're talking about traffic, too. I mean, we got a issue, we got to deal with traffic. This is a small, little section of town. This isn't a two, three-lane highway here. So, we got to take.
I know where it is.
So, but again, my main, my main concern is the use. And just having the board really look closely at restricting this and making sure that it's within the village and the village benefits, not just Concordia. You know, again, I think any tax dollars they make from the money that they're going to collect from these teams is probably to go to Bronxville, not Tuckahoe. So, you know, it just, I would like to see the benefits, you know, balanced between Concordia colleges' needs and then the villages' needs. So, that's my comments.
Thank you.
Just to quickly address a couple of the points that you made. The swale that runs along the north end of that field would remain as is, but the sheet flow that currently goes to that swale would be taken into the stormwater system that will be built with the field. So, there's no threat in taking that swale away. And an additional system would be placed to capture that water that currently goes to that. So, it, it would be a net benefit overall for any of the neighbors to the north, which include you. The parking spaces that you have, along Rose Avenue, we're actually not touching at all in this project. Those spaces would remain as is, or they are completely outside of the, the limit line of the project.
Without touching parking spaces? Oh, you're not.
The, the chain link fence that exists along the property line, which is beyond the parking, would be removed and reconstructed. So, there would be just a new chain link fence.
Instead of this current chain link fence, it will be a new chain link fence. That's the only difference.
Because I thought you said you were adding more for emergency access.
Well, there's a, a current gate.
There's one, right.
Yeah.
So, but you proposed two.
No, there, there's two gates onto the field, but there's one gate access from.
So, you're only going to have one gate access?
Correct.
Oh, okay. And I thought he was doing two.
There's two onto the field, but there's one from Rose Avenue.
That's what I got out of it. Fine. If you guys have ever seen this site, there's a, there's a, there's a.
Use the microphone.
Right.
Microphone.
There's a gate in the, in between with a, a access area that nobody could park to. That's going to remain. So, there's only going to be one means of access to the physical piece of property. There's going to be two within the middle of the gate, the middle area, right? The gate to the field, because you have two gates you're going to propose. Do you understand?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hello, Erica Conway, also of eight Winslow Circle. So, I also have concerns about the lights, but that has been brought up enough, so I'm not going to take it from, to that right now. One of the things I was thinking of that also needs to be emphasized is the sound. And I'm going to take my examples from, being a parent, from when, and actually, I first should start out by saying, Concordia has always been a fantastic neighbor. We, they really have in the past. Whenever we've had problems with those trees that do overhang the backyards, they've been taken care of. If they have fallen on our fence, our fence has been replaced by Concordia. So, we have had so far a very good working relationship with Concordia. I will say that when, that noise, when my children were very young and there were the games and there would be the loud music in the practice, and of course, when they were very young, that's when I was tearing my hair out, because, because of course, that was at naptime. However, the children learned to sleep through that. But I never had to worry about noise at night. And so, now having the possibility of night games, that raises it to a, a different level. Like, you can justify in your mind about practice sounds, and, and the music that is played during practice is, it's loud, which I know is to get everyone hyped and excited about practice and the games. I understand that. My other concern sometimes, which if things are being blared out in the music, if you're, technically, if you're a parent with young kids, sometimes it is the music that's being played, and it's the lyrics. It's the, so there are, it's not just level of sound. It's what's being projected out in the neighborhood. If we're also then going into night games with having loud music or the announcements, anything like that, that's also going to start affecting, if you're in your house and you're relaxing, not just sleeping, you're trying to watch a television program. It's going to start affecting just everyday life when that happens. Now, you say that it's not just going to be the sixteen possible games that are played there. And are those nighttime games or daytime games, or it's just sixteen games? there, and are those nighttime games or daytime games, or is just sixteen games?
Well, currently, no. We don't have light, so the games are during the day.
During the day. So that might be put to, tonight instead, or just split up, or something like that.
Ideally, our quality of life and our quality of schedule would be to have afternoon events.
Microphone.
And if there's, on campus, when we have day classes, I think, so ideally, it would be to avoid missed class time. So ideally, the, the ideal time for games still remains the same. What the lights will add for us...
Microphone.
Oh, oh, sorry. What the lights will add for us is that moment where you said we had six-thirty AM practice, because we're trying to utilize daylight, we wouldn't have to use, we wouldn't have to practice at six-thirty. If we have two teams, one team can practice three to five, and maybe another can go five to seven, and we can utilize the evening hours versus six-thirty in the morning. That's the benefit of the lights for us.
So that clarifies things a little about the timing that you're thinking of. But if we're then talking about it going to the teams, lacrosse teams or soccer teams in the surrounding areas, like if it's Bronxville asking to use it, or Eastchester, or any, any of the other ones. Now, of course, my children, who used to, in the first scenario, were this, now I've got teenagers. And I do have a son who plays lacrosse. And those games, that's loud. That, it is, it is a little too close. I, I know you showed the example of how it would look from a, a field that was in Long Island, and you said that there were houses all around that field on three sides. But if you look at the, there is so much more foliage, there's such a larger buffer between that field, that example field, and the surrounding houses. It's much lar, much larger than what we have here. This is, this is very, very close. So that's why there is that concern. The sound, there's no buffer for the sound. Even if we say that the light spill can be controlled, there's no buffer for the sound. And, yeah, and so again, I do think we foresee a problem with a decrease in property value. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment?
I'm sorry, I just have one more question. So when I looked in the planning, there's an impact assessment, and it talked about increase in usage, and I think it was checked no, or a slight increase. So I would, I would ask if that's really the case going forward, because we've heard about the increase in usage. And it also mentioned a soccer and lacrosse field. Concordia doesn't have lacrosse, so is there a plan to add lacrosse to the, is, are they adding a college lacrosse team?
We don't have any in the immediate future, but it is something obviously, as we continue to build up our university, that if we had a lacrosse team, that might be something to do.
So plans, and, you know, again, coming from an athletic background, there would be a plan to add another team, which adds, you know, three teams trying to get on, and you might do three to five, four to six, seven to nine, or you might do five to seven. So, but I, I think that's helpful, so, okay. That answers my question.
Anybody else?
Can I just do one quick?
Yeah, you can respond, because I have questions.
When we first asked to be on the planning board meeting for tonight, we thought it was too early, because we weren't going to be ready with all the calculations and all the things that the planning board needed. But the building department very nicely said to us, why don't you guys come? It's going to take two, three, maybe even four meetings before this can be done. So why don't you come, put it out there, let the residents and the, the members of the surrounding community talk, hear what they have to say, go back to the college, talk with everybody involved, and, and then maybe by the second or third meeting, we can have either more answers for you, respond to what it is that are your concerns. And that's really what our intent was tonight. So in a way, I'm glad that you didn't have a quorum, because I don't think we would have been ready for the quorum, to be honest with you. So we are going to take back what we hear, what we heard. I have three representatives of the college here, plus Jim and Chris, and, and hopefully, when we come back in February, we'll have some more answers and maybe be able to give you more definitive information on things like use, like hours for the lights, if we want to continue down that path, noise issues, and when, so, like you say, we try hard, because I'm the one that gets the call from all, all of you, saying, there's a tree down, or there's a fence broken, or this is, and I really try hard to respond as quickly as possible. And I think we do a good job, and we want to maintain that relationship. So please know that we're not trying to make this adversarial, that's not our intent. We still respect everything that you guys live with, being right next to a, a college campus, and we're going to try to do our best to, to answer some of these questions for you. Okay? Thank you.
Just to suggest, because February 19th is President's Week, people might be on vacation, that we might be forced home.
Our meeting? Are you asking that the planning board meeting be reconsidered? That would be something we'd have to discuss, if at all.
Well, we're going to have to accept.
I, I was going to say, not, not to, not to discount your updated thoughts as, as this evolves, but there will be a lot of, there will probably be easily another two meetings, and if you happen to miss one, you might, you certainly can come to the following one.
Also, if I may, the, the work session would probably be on the sixth. The work session is kind of an informal meeting like this. Public can't speak in the work sessions, but they get a lot of work done there. So it's probably a good idea to come. We could probably hold it in this room if a lot of people come.
Yeah, it, that's a certain, we've certainly done it in the past.
I believe it's the sixth. Yeah, just check on the, the website, but I believe it's the sixth.
Can you explain a little bit more about the work session, what our role would be then? If we were kind of...
Your role is to include, no, your role as the applicant is to present a more refined, updated set of drawings and submissions that you want the planning board to consider. Presumably, you will include some of these comments. I don't know if you can or you won't, you will, but that's ideally what would happen. Certainly, you'd be closer, you may have your technical, your geotechnical person with some information that you're going to be able to incorporate into it before February 6th. So basically, it's how much more information has been generated that you can memorialize in documents that you're going to submit to the planning board for their additional comment, and see how much further down the road we get. Public is entitled to observe, but as Mr. Gerson said, not to comment. The value of that, despite what it may sound like, is that they can certainly comment at the next formal public meeting like we would have been having today had we had a quorum. It doesn't foreclose anything. It maybe slows it down, but it doesn't foreclose anything. And you want to add anything to that, Gary?
Yeah, that's fine.
I just want to let the, the public know, too, that the village, the building department is still under review. There's some stuff that we need from the applicant, so there could be some more things that we might need to be addressed. So this is very preliminary. So I know everybody's shooting a lot of stuff out, like use and all that other stuff. So we haven't made our physical determination on some stuff, so just want to let everybody be aware of that, okay?
Yeah, I did have a couple of questions. You may have addressed them, sir, in your, in your recitation just now, but what, what occurred to me as we were moving along was, we need more photos, we need more, more drawings that indicate slope. There's been a, frankly, I'd like, I don't know how much beyond the property we can ask for slope, but as far as, as far as we can ask beyond the property line, I would like to see slope.
Okay. Well, I, I know that the applicant, I think, is pretty much aware that we haven't gotten any real full submissions at this point.
Yeah.
So we're going to need setbacks off the accessory structures, the physical drawings of the accessory structures. Topo would be nice, so we could see the grade level that you're proposing. He, he knows we need a physical survey, so, so there's some checklist stuff that they still need to provide to us.
Yeah, I'm just talking about what, what hit, hit me.
Okay.
Also, there's this discussion of games, how many? Your formal schedule seems to include sixteen, you say. You will entertain others who may wish to utilize your field. You talk about practice hours. I have no idea how many practice hours are included, on what days of the week. I would like some kind of formal schedule of that. What is current, what you may be able to anticipate. Certainly, what's current, because you can tell me what's current. Like I said, you say you've had inquiries from other organizations. If it's at all possible to average the number of inquiries and the likelihood you would have accepted, or granted, or given those other organizations the ability to use your field, how many of those would you have accepted or granted? Also, the hours. I don't know how, how long a practice hour is. I don't know how long a soccer game or a lacrosse game takes. I don't know how late or early in the day you expect to make your fields available for yourself and anyone else. I mean, we have noise ordinances that go to ten o'clock at night, Sunday through Friday. If they exceed that noise ordinance, they're simply exceeding the noise ordinance. We're not even talking anything else. I mean, several other ordinance will, will, will kick in and come into play. But as, as much as possible, what you can tell me about the current state and the projected status of those types, the use of the field with additional players on it and teams? Is that, is that understandable? If you have questions? No? Yeah, because expansion is, is really, expansion is physical, and expansion is time, and expansion is a lot of other things. And I, I, what I'm hearing is your aim for expansion versus the community's hope for as little as possible, because they're pretty happy with the way things are, it seems, or mostly happy. Somewhere, there's going to be a place people can be less unhappy about. I'm not looking for happy, I'm looking for less unhappy. So those are my thoughts. That's what I, I would like to see a little bit more information on as we move forward in this, okay? I, I said photos. I'd like photos and drawings of beyond the property line to the homes and all the adjacent property lines. It may not be something we can improve, but I think it helps give us a bigger picture. Anything you can think of, Commissioner Narambo? Mr. Gerson? Mr., Mr. Building Department?
There's, there's seven dash one, I think I spoke at the community meeting, of our code says really what the applicant needs to submit, or gives them ideas what to sub, well, it says what they should submit. Some aren't applicable, but other things, at least they'll have a laundry list of things they know they need to put together. And I think you've mentioned most, a lot of them.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so thank you for your comments. Your, your input is important, because it's a two-way street, you know? They, they do something, but you react to it. And then it keeps going back and forth. So that, that, maybe we can find some middle ground. Anything else you want to offer, Mr. Project Applicant?
The next work session is February 6th.
Yeah.
I believe it is. But again, it'll be up on our website.
And they start at seven o'clock.
Yeah.
And then we'll have, it's the first and third Tuesdays of the month are typically the scheme.
Correct.
The, this is obviously seven-thirty meeting time. So thank you.
That's it.
Anything? We've got nothing else? Okay, we're not going to have FAR discussion, are we? Good. I don't think I need a, we don't need a motion to adjourn, either. We can just say we're, the meeting, meeting is over. Thank you for your time.